This meeting is being recorded.
Are we excited we're recording it? Steve's had a party over there. Alright, so we're all set, correct? We're still running?
That is correct.
So.
Being six thirty on my play, June first, twenty twenty-two, and having Coram open the planning board meeting for the season. Before we get going on a read in, I should know this by now. I deleted it when I was talking. So we're still operating under the time manager's order, imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Bridgewater Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No unpleasant attendance of the members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings in real time. The meeting is being recorded within forty-eight hours. We will post the link as recording to the town's website and or the social media pages. The following members of the Bridgewater Planning Board are participating remotely. I'm Patrick Driscoll, the Chair. Miss Astrod Rojas, Mr. Michael McDonald, the Vice Chair, and Mr. Stephen Geller. During the meeting, all votes of the board will be taken as roll call votes. The following Bridgewater Town staff will also be participating remotely. This is Jennifer DeBobri, the Community Economic Development Director, Mr. Shane O'Brien, the Town Planner. I believe, and I don't know if they're on yet, Mr. Azu Entenaro, the VPW Director will be joining us at some point. And is Mr. Greg Tansey with us this evening, Mr. DeBobri?
Yeah.
Yes, and as well as Steve Solari.
Mr. Greg Tansey, the Town Engineer, excuse me, and Mr. Stephen Solari, the Building Commissioner. At this time, everyone's mic is muted. The board's mics be unmuted through the whole meeting. These items appear on the agenda. The project's representatives' mics be unmuted. If a project is a public hearing and allows for public comment, we ask you to use chat feature to ask your question by listening to your name and address and question. The host, who is Mrs. DeBobri, will recognize your question in order. You can also use the raise my hand feature in the description menu, and you'll be unmuted when the host recognizes you. Again, please state your name, address before asking a question. If you're on the phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. And I apologize, Mr. O'Brien, are you the host now?
Yeah, we co-host, but whatever, whatever you guys like. But yeah, I could, I'll be the host.
Okay. Back to the agenda. I'll open the public hearing for eighty-six Spring Street. Just because of the public hearing, we'll ask that the staff give an update. We'll turn it over to the applicant for discussion. The board will ask questions, then we'll open up for public comment, so. Mr. O'Brien, do you want to update us on it before we turn it over to Mr. Morris, or would you just like to turn it over to Mr. Morris?
Um, we can, I can give kind of a brief update, just for those who are here. So at the last meeting, we did request a legal opinion from Attorney Rollins, the town attorney, asking about the question of the variance is currently on the property, as well as does the applicant, would the applicant need a variance or is there a waiver process as part of this process for the board? So we provided that summary to the applicant as well as the board. Just pretty much summarizing the summary that the applicant cannot request a waiver of that use requiring that residential be allotted on the first floor. The current apartment on the first floor is allowed by the variance on the property and can remain if the applicant is seeking, if the seeking of the approval of the special permit or the var, or if the proposal is withdrawn. However, for that special permit to be granted in accordance to the planning board's standards of the mixed-use requirements, the applicant would essentially need to seek a variance from that section of the nineteen, which is currently not in compliance with. And that variance approval does not guarantee that that special permit is still going to be approved by the board as, you know, the applicant still needs to meet the criteria of section nineteen. So there's that. We received updated elevations from Bud Morris as well. But other than that, I'm happy to turn it over to him to give his presentation.
Morris? Mr. Morris, he's still muted.
Am I now okay?
All good.
Okay. Is it possible for you to do the shit? Can I share my screen?
Sure, let me make you a co-host and allow you to share screen. One second. So you should, you should be able to share the screen for me. Should be all set.
It says host disabled, participant sharing screen.
I should work now.
Do I got you now?
All good.
Okay. We would covered a lot of ground at the last hearing, and I don't want to bore you by going over the same things over and over again. So I'm going to kind of buzz through this a little bit and try to get to the crux of the matter. Last time, we talked about a million-dollar addition to the Central Business District. There were some questions on elevations. Some elevations were resubmitted now, and there are a few little changes to them, but roof lines were corrected in there. You can see that we were doing the cedar impressions on the front here and on the back. The board had asked about having four windows added, so we added the four windows here, both on the front and the back. On the back elevation, same thing. We added here. We went with all cedar impressions on the whole top here. He does show the removal of the projection that was over here off the back of the building in this little projection here as well. So this is the finished product that you're looking at, front and rear of the property. On the side, this is the side that's facing BTV. And again, he changed off on the roof lines. This is a line drawing based on photographs that are there. He shows the little vents or whatever is on the roof. One of the things, we listened to one of the board members' comments about mixing and matching on the siding and trying to have things in. What we decided to do is just use the cedar impressions for the entire second and third floor along with the facade of the building. This will require no blending in of anything. Cedar impressions are about four times more expensive than the regular vinyl, but we thought that the look that provided here was fantastic. We kept the divisions and the columns down below for the look of the project. On the other side of the building, same thing here, was doing the cedar impressions all the way around, so it has a cohesive look. You can look at what it currently looks like with a little projection up here and lack of windows and doors, and those are all added that we talked about here. And the same thing, we're redoing the entire deck portion and what have you. The layout's not changing, same thing for, for two, one bedrooms rather, and two, one, two bedrooms that were being added, same as last plan. There was a little bit, a couple of people expressed some questions on the site plan, so we just highlighted this little area. The back area were designated guest parking spaces because that was asked about it. One of the members asked about the entire surface being paved, so we put a note on there about the entire surface being paved. And we realigned the the areas here, so the hash marks came in front of the stairs and reflected accurately what's there and what's going to be there in the future. And a little note about site distance, as you pull out here, I think you all have been here for Brianna's breakfast or something, and you can see all the way down to Route eighteen and down to one oh four. I don't think there's much of a question there. If the board were to move forward and decide to approve, we would obviously add all the conditions, your approval. On the lighting plan, we did listen to the comment about not wanting the motion detector. So it would be one eleven-foot height hooded light pack matching the other ones there in the rear parking lot. And the six exterior lights we talked about before would switch the pear trees with shade trees from the approved town list because that was a comment. The exterior siding on the entire facade, the front of the building, will be replaced to meet the plan. The side deck is replaced with trex or similar decking. The planning boxes we talked about, as well as the the front window boxes. The north side of the building, which is that rear side with the projection, would also be recided. In the first-floor apartment would eliminate one bedroom to become a two-bedroom, so that it's a mix of one and two bedrooms, would be five and four. The air conditioning units will be screened. Prior to a building permit, we would submit structural drawings to be approved by the commission, Building Commissioner, as well as things for fire suppression and smoke and CO2. We have that already in the building here, but that would be extended there. And then as the beginning, as we start to talk about the legal opinion, you could condition it on a variance from the ZBA or decision from the Court of Competent Jurisdiction to be submitted before the, to allow the first-floor apartment to remain, or we wouldn't be able to get a building permit. I did want to talk to you. That stuff, I think most of us already really knew. I wanted to talk to you a little bit about Spring Street and the area and what we're trying to accomplish down here. This little slide is called Spring Street Revitalization Envisioned. Those of you familiar with Spring Street, this is Brianna, well, it was Brianna's breakfast. Now it's the Champion's Barber Shop, and it's the Pillsbury Flourish just relocated there. And this right here, you might not know, but that's a first-floor apartment. Nobody knows because it's kind of hidden in the back of the building. Over here is Lasserta Photography, over here is Bridgewater Bagel. And the same thing, kind of hidden in here is our apartment that has no frontage out to the street or any way for anyone to know there's a business there. And then off the back is my office that runs the entire back of the building. One of our tenants, Al Lasserta, right here, formed a nonprofit called Fire for Effect that supports the veterans. He's been negotiating or working with the town manager at organizing a community farmer's market in the back in this area and trying to obtain a grant to clean up the area and work with the town. Part of that, he wants to work and do with the canoe launch over here. I've met with him, and this isn't part of my presentation. It's just telling you what we're hoping for Spring Street. This entire area, bigger than the entire lot of Brianna's, is going to be our landscaped area. We're putting grass through here, fifteen trees that aren't there. We're going to put a few benches out there. I wanted to put a little walkway right here and another walkway right here, and the reason for that is while they're having their events on Saturdays or Sundays, Bridgewater Bagel's going to bring iced coffee out to them and do some things out there. And we thought it'd be kind of nice for people to be able to actually come over to an area that's thirty feet above the river, have a pretty view as they walk through here, and I've offered to allow them to do that during the course of his events. Across the street is college parking. He's already approached the town, the college, rather, got permission on Saturdays or Sundays for his special events to have people park here. There's a walkway across Spring Street already there that thou comes in front of the buildings, and people could come out this way. They wanted to come through the parking lot into this area, they could come back and forth. It's a, it's a beautiful vision of what Spring Street could accomplish. Biggest part of that, though, is our building, a million-dollar addition down to Spring Street. This building's gone right now. When anybody comes into this farmer's market or sees the area, or when they come into us, that's what they're going to see coming down Spring Street, is a beautiful building and the revitalization of of Spring Street. I think this is a nice vision to do that. Moving on, though, the legal opinion that the board received. Obviously, the legal opinion gives you the option of denial, if that's what your desire is. If that first-floor apartment is such a sticking point to the board, you have a right to deny and let the cards play, but we also go over to nineteen oh four thirteen, and that's exactly what it says in your bylaw. This isn't me interpreting it or anything else, but it says you may reduce this requirement. What is this requirement? The immediately predecessor is, in all instances, a first-floor shall be commercial development. That's the requirement you can reduce. There's no reason to reduce the thirty percent. They could build less apartments upstairs or whatever the hell they're doing. And it has to be because of topography, environmental soils, the exact reasons that we got our variance. If the board does not want to find exceptional circumstances in doing that, we had put earlier that you could approve this subject to the Board of Appeals granting a variance and let them decide on whether they want to reissue the same variance they gave us. That way, you'd have all your plans and approvals on, conditions and approvals on there. Or finally, I disagree with, I disagree with his interpretation that you can't grant a waiver. I just have to look at the board's practices. The very last one in the Central Business District that you just approved gave four waivers, and those are the specific sections. They didn't meet twenty percent of the lot. There's no, you can see right on there. It's twelve and fifteen. That's not an eighteen-foot trial. The applications up here show it doesn't meet the twenty. I'm glad that you approved that project because I think it's a big addition to the town, and it's a great thing. But it shows, and I have other examples that I'm not going to go into, that the town has had the right or has had the practice on certain applicants of granting waivers. There's no storage of these spots right here. It says right in there.
Mr. Morris, I interrupt you for a second, if you don't mind. Mr. Solari is on the call with us. So first of all, I don't think we can approve something subject to a variance. If it doesn't mean zoning, we can't approve it. And second of all, this, this is the Bogatz project that you're referencing?
Yeah.
So our scope was limited here because Mr. Solari determined that it was a non, there's a pre-existing non-conforming building. So the applicant actually, the actually, the applicant, the applicant actually demonstrated that they reduced the non-conformity of it by reducing occupant load and doing a few other things. So they, I think they improved parking. I think they reduced the occupant load. So I, and they didn't make anything more non-conforming, so I don't want to speak.
I don't want to, I'm glad you approved it. I don't want to argue on it.
Well, you brought it up, so let's talk about it. So, I mean, that's, that's the difference. The difference is, the difference is it came aboard with a zoning determination that was pre-existing, non-conforming. And our scope under that, and our scope or our purview under that decision from the building perspective is much different than section nineteen. I believe personally, it should have come to us under section nineteen, and I think in the future, projects like this will, but Mr. Solari can speak to that.
The second-floor apartments, the five apartments were added. How were they added if it wasn't under section nineteen?
I believe it should have been.
Exist.
Could we have Mr. Solari answer that, please?
Yep. Well, basically, there was already two apartments. There was already two apartments upstairs, so they just expanded from two to five.
I have two upstairs, and I wanted to add four more, but I didn't count the same way as a pre-existing building. I don't.
We were expanding the second floor, not the first floor.
What was that?
The expansion was of the.
First floor as well.
The first.
I think the bottom line is, in order to get the additional units, I believe Mr. Morris is right. It requires a special permit. If you're reading the use table, knowing to get a special permit for mixed use, but to have that density applied to a lot area, it's a special permit. I said on the record in this meeting, and you can go back to the meeting, Mr. Morris, if you're looking into it, I said I believe this should have come to us under section nineteen. So, but, but the board didn't have the authority because the town, through its zoning enforcement office, had made the decision that it was a pre-existing, non-conforming building. So we couldn't rely on section nineteen.
Yeah. Mr. Mr. Jim, I'm going to just click to my last slide, okay? I'm not going to, you know, I think sometimes when you're looking at this, if you vote to approve this with conditions, you're going to get that first-floor apartment reduced to two bedrooms. There'll be a mix of one and two bedrooms, and you're going to get a million dollars' worth of things and a great initiative down on Spring Street. If you vote to deny it, you're going to still have a three-bedroom apartment on the first floor because the town council said that that can remain. There'll be all multi-bedroom apartments and no improvements. And again, I've gotten to the point where I started out with a half-million-dollar, six-hundred-thousand-dollar addition, and I'm now up to a million dollars spending down there. I can't afford to lose that first apartment. Your bylaws, I don't get how your bylaw, you can't waive things when you have in the past, not only on that project, I could cite other ones, but that twenty percent, and again, I'm not doing this for them, but I just wanted to show you, the twenty percent of each lot shall be vegetated. If you drive around the town common, nothing in the town square, all the way down to the old bowling alley, can meet that bylaw, and what you're telling me is you don't have the right to waive it. I'm willing to accept the decision of the board, and I didn't come on tonight to argue and fight and what have you. I came on to make a presentation of how I'm going to make Spring Street a beautiful place for the people that are down there. Last thing that I will say is the tenants out front, I'm very proud of how they've taken initiative to work with the town to try to improve the place. We've gone through six, five or six hearings on this. Not one person has ever showed up in opposition to it. And from the very beginning, there was this thing to extract a pound of flesh by eliminating the, the first-floor apartment that nobody sees or cares about and does not add anything to the commercial base of the town of Bridgewater, having no frontage anywhere for anyone to see it. It solely just makes the, the project not financially viable. And, and I'll leave it at that. Let the board have discussion and ask questions. Thank you very much.
Mr. O'Brien. We can't approve something that doesn't meet.
It doesn't. In terms of the special permit standards from, from our, my conversation with Attorney Rollins, and that was kind of the basis of having the conversation, is that it would require a variance from that particular section. I can't speak to what has occurred in the past or interpretation of the past, but based on the conversation that I've had with Attorney Rollins is that, that a variance would be needed for that first-floor apartment to exist and for, well, for, continue to exist with the approval of this special permit.
And Mr. Morris, I, I know you think it's ridiculous, but in my opinion, the purpose of the, of the Central Business District, and it's right in the purpose statement, is to expand small commercial retail uses. While at the same time, and I'm paraphrasing, you know, provide opportunities and housing choices for, you know, different, different needs. You know, from my perspective, I'm willing, I have no problem with the six additional units. It's just, I'd like to see the commercial space expanded. And, and, and I think that asking to have one residential unit converted to commercial and allowing six additional upstairs, I don't think that's a big ask. I actually think it's, it's, I think it's the right thing to do, so.
And just in the, in the purview of the board, too, the board essentially can't approve a project that doesn't meet the zoning of the section. You know, it'd be, you know, difficult to do, you know, it's not defensible.
It certainly could be conditioned upon a variance. And if the variance wasn't obtained, then the approval could not move forward. Getting back to the point, Mr. Driscoll, I, I agree if we hadn't remodeled the building into the way it is right now. Right now, Bridgewater Bagel has this entire section. Kristen's been there for five years. She moved her business from the center of town. Do I kick her out? Do I try to find a way to enlarge her space and charge her more rent so she?
The logistics of the project are up to you. Are you presenting a project? You know, if you have to move tenants, relocate them temporarily, that's up to you.
But, but it's.
We can't base our decisions on you might have to relocate a tenant. I mean, that's, that's, that's not a special permit criteria. I, I mean, that's, it'd be ridiculous. I mean, you could build the back unit, we could, you know, and then you could, you could move that person on that floor up to a nice new unit. I mean.
That she takes care of her father and her son. And again, I, we're getting, we're getting off track, and I didn't want, I didn't want to go there. I apologize. I, we've started from before my very first presentation. I learned that they didn't want the first-floor apartment, period. And.
Well, I think, I think the goal, I think the goal of the next use ordinance is to expand small retail and restaurant uses, and that's what we're trying to do. I mean, I, I, I've never said I have a problem with four or six apartments. You change it from four to six, I think it's fine. I don't have any problem with that, but I just don't understand. We've been here at the fifth or sixth meeting.
Right.
And we're still talking about, as you called the elephant in the room, and it's, and it's really, first of all, I don't think it's a big deal asking to make one residential unit on the first floor commercial. And, and I think it could, it could be a beautiful project, and, and second of all, we can't move forward with it the way it is. And personally, just, I wouldn't want to, if you want to go for grants, that's fine, but just to be consistent with everything else we've done in town, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be in favor of the special permit, even if you got the variance. I think it's a small ask to turn one residential unit to commercial, and you get sixty.
I appreciate you, Mr. Driscoll, spending my money, but this is two thousand dollars a month, and it cost me a hundred thousand dollars to build. You want me to throw away a hundred thousand dollars and two thousand dollars a month so that I can spend another million dollars? I'll never see this in my.
You have to make. I mean, yeah, it's, it's an economic choice you have to make. You're presenting a mixed-use project.
I think, and that's, you know what, as I said, I've been very firm from the very beginning that the project doesn't work eliminating that, and the board has the right to make the decision they want to. I thought I made a very good presentation of what Spring Street can be, and instead, we'll, we'll continue to have the progress that we see in this town. Thank you.
We have four comments or questions for Mr. Morris?
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with you, Pat. It's Mr. Morris, you know, I, I will applaud his, his upgrades to the project. I think if it wasn't for that, that first-floor apartment, I'd be happy to approve this. I think it'd be a good-looking building, but just for the sake of consistency and to maintain, you know, a straightforward course with what we want to do with these mixed uses, I could, even, even if you got the variance, I cannot be in favor of this as it stands.
Okay.
Any other board questions or comments?
I don't have any at this time. I mean, we, we can go back and forth and argue this all night. You know, what it comes down to is this board cannot, cannot approve a, a thing that's, any project that does not meet our zoning right now. So as much as I would like to see his building nice and upgraded, and I can appreciate what he wants to do to, you know, to the street area and make everything look nice, you know, I think he knows his options. He needs to either go to a ZBA and get another variant or redesign it. And I'm not going to approve something based on what ifs, you know, what if not, you know? And then once you come back, and, and I'll be honest with you, as I look at your presentation of the buildings, I, I think your last facade of the building would look nicer than, than what you're doing now, so I would probably save you the money on the cedar, cedar upgrades by going back to what you originally proposed. But a, as it is now, and even if this project doesn't go forward, and you really feel that strong about the look of the place, if you, if you were to do just a regular facelift to your building now, if, if what you're thinking is not nice enough, I'd appreciate that, too. And what you're going to do out back for the community, letting people sit back there in the green space, I think that's awesome, too. And I, I hope that a decision that may be made tonight would not keep you from moving forward of doing what you want to do back there.
I, I thank you, and something, I will, first of all, I support Al and his endeavor. It's a fantastic thing. I've been supporting him now as he does a weekly podcast for the veterans and everything else, and, and I've been encouraging. I think that's fantastic. And, and I don't mind helping him with this project. I obviously can't spend twenty thousand dollars in the backyard and put trees and do all of the other things without some financial engine that makes sense. But as I said, I'm, I'm still a member of the community, and I, I always have been, and I'm certainly willing to help and work with him. Any changes to the building or the things that the board wanted, I was willing to obviously make and work with the board. Same thing as you mentioned on the siding. We, we're an impasse from, from day one. I don't know, I, I have no idea of how possibly creating a commercial space there that can't meet ADA requirements, has no frontage to any street, and only has four feet on its sidelines, so people ain't even see it, has any benefit to the town of Bridgewater. I don't want to, and I appreciate, I put in here the ZBA that I would be happy to go back to them, but I don't. I listened to a couple of members' comments, and, and it sounds like you're not inclined, even the ZBA says I can keep it. You have this. You want the pound of flesh, and you wouldn't approve it anyway, so I don't want to go, I, I'm happy to have it approved with a, with a condition and go to the ZBA. But if you're telling me I'm going to go to the ZBA and spin my wheels and come back to you, and you'll deny it again, that's, that's not helpful. I think.
I can't, I can't speak for other members. I mean, I did not say I. Well, I can't, I can't speak for other members. I mean, I, I did not say I would not vote for that or approve that, you know, two, two, two did, so, and, and there's five members on this board, so. And I, I would leave it, you know, it's, it's at your discretion how you want to really proceed with this.
So, but what I'm understanding with the board, the board doesn't have a problem with the presentation. Other than the first floor apartment being eliminated, is that correct?
That, that, that is my opinion and, and, you know, I just want to be straightforward. That, that is correct, if even if you got the variance, I wouldn't want you to waste time and money getting that, only to come back and. You know, hear the same thing over again, at least for me. Don't waste, you know, your resources like that.
Yeah, and just a reminder for the board and the applicant as well, and we have four members here. Ray is not here, so, um, the applicant would need. Four of the four here, um, for any approval. Of a special permit. We need a majority plus one.
Mr. Morris, I'm, and I'm not trying to give you a hard time, just trying to be consistent, right? And it's, I think the intent is that. The bonus of the residential apartments comes with the expansion of commercial uses. You know, and, and, uh, you keep citing logistics of who lives there. If, if we based all our decisions on who live there or what, I mean.
Tonight is the first night I've mentioned any of it.
We, 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 we can, you know, we could condition that it has to be, it has to be converted to commercial within, you know, one year of the start of construction or something. And we could talk about stuff like that, but. You know, you haven't, I think we've bugged some things and we've asked from day one, the majority of the board. And we've told you from day one that just to be consistent, we want the whole first floor to be commercial. And.
I, I, I apologize, I didn't want to cut you off.
And, and I, you know, we can't base all our decisions on somebody says, I spent this amount of money on a, on a, on a, on a project, or I spent $100,000 on that unit. That unit could easily be converted to office space for not a lot of money. I mean, we're not, we're not asking you to do something completely out of whack. You have a unit on the first floor. That can be easily converted to commercial, could be easily added to any of the existing commercial spaces to give those more square footage. And wouldn't have to meet ADA compliance as long as all those others that you could add it to the existing by working the first floor. The logistics of your project, how you move tenants around, why you do this construction. That's up to you and we can't base our decisions on the bagel place might have a wall down for two weeks. I mean.
I'm not asking you to do that. I was. Explaining a bit on the building, but I have a problem with the consistency. I didn't want to bring up. Other.
Can you, can you name, can you name one project that we've approved under mixed use with, with residential on the first floor?
Can you name one project that has a variance for a first floor apartment in the central business?
Not, none, none has come before us, no.
None has ever been.
My question is, you asked about this board and consistency.
I, other than. That so that I'd spend a half a million dollars. But when I'm talking about consistency, I heard that you can't waive things. Those are four specific things on your most recent approval. I can go back to Smootens, I can go.
They were actually, they were not, they were not waived this time today.
But I'm, I'm not trying to do that. What I'm trying to tell you is.
You are not, we, we can't, Mr. Morris, we can't waive zone. We can't waive, if something doesn't apply that 20% square open space, we can't waive that. Bogats, bogats came to us as a pre-existing non-conforming use. And that's how it came to us.
Just a non-conforming building?
We didn't waive.
Isn't this building a pre-existing non-conforming building?
What did I say earlier? I believe bogats came to us incorrectly, and I said that in the meeting. My hands were tied and we couldn't, because a decision was made.
So, so different applicants and different properties are treated differently? That's the.
Well, I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say that. It, it, it comes down to interpretation of like section seven of 40 of MGL. It, it comes down to. Uh, and for, because I don't, I additionally, I don't want the applicant to go through all this process. And then be denied a special permit and then stated that, oh, by the way. You have to go to the zone, ZBA where a variance may not be approved.
I, as I said, I think, um, I, I appreciate the board. I appreciate the board's time.
So are you, do we have any public comment?
Yes.
Mr. Silver?
First of all. Um, I do not like the fact that a presentation piece was made. By altering a certified plan that was submitted previously.
Oh, could you, could you, could you state your name, please, first?
Lawrence Silva from Silva Engineering Associates.
Sure.
It's very unprofessional to do that, to affix, uh, sections that were not even related to that project. And to put it on a certified plan that was produced by my office. I just don't think that's right. And secondly, to make a comparison of it. And to say that certain applicants can, can get away with something and others can't. That is just so out of line. And I take offense to that. The circumstances on that project were totally different and they were not under section 19. And that's all I want to say about it before I lose my cool.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, do we, do we lose Mr. Morris? Because I haven't seen him on, on the phone.
I think we did.
He may come back in, um, but. We can still take public comment.
Well, the other, the other comment, I admit, before we take any more public comment. In addition to not meeting the requirement, we still have plans that are stamped. We still have plans that came from. A PE that's not licensed and we still, and we have a site distance calculation that's done. By I don't know who, because there's no stamp or reference to anybody to do that on there, so. Do we have any more public comment?
Um, I do not see anyone in the chat. I do not see anyone with. Their virtual hands raised. So I do not see any public comment at this time.
Okay, I'd like to give Mr. Morris the opportunity to come back on before we decide if we want to close the public hearing.
Sure thing. I'll be on the lookout for him.
Is there a way to contact him to see if? Or is that, can we do that? Or can you? I'm not sure.
Uh, it, it could be just as simple as, you know, reach, starting the computer or. Anything, we, we do have means of contacting him, but I, I do. Think he was aware that he was in a meeting and. There hasn't, wasn't anything happening just yet, so.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Can, can we table this until he comes back and move on to something else?
I was just going to say you could suspend this hearing until such time as the applicant returns or after your other business, if he hasn't returned, you could take it up again.
Sure. Oh, well, we actually, yeah, um, yeah, that's fine. I got a message from. Somebody stating that Bud is restarting his computer.
I actually have to, uh, switch devices real quick, uh, for my Zoom thing, so I'm going to take that opportunity to do that right now. I'll be right back on the call, so just, uh. See you guys in a minute.
All right, so yeah, we could. Table it or we could, I guess.
Uh, we lost, we lost mic, we lost mic now, so.
Should we just recess for about five minutes? Okay. All right, we'll keep the recording going, um, but, uh, the board is officially in recess. Or we have to vote to have be in recess.
So moved. Yep. Second, Ms. Ross. Okay, um, Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Ms. Ross?
Yes.
No, we, yes, okay, five minutes.
All right, I, I think Bud's back in the room, but, um, I'll let him know that we're in recess for five minutes.
Thank you.
Everybody is showing up as muted to me. I'm not sure.
Oh, everyone is muted.
Oh, okay, all right.
Why are you gone? Like, we took a time in recess.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, we, we're waiting for, uh, yourself and, um, Mr. Morris to come back on.
Yeah, I think Mr. Morris is back, but.
I am, I'm on via my telephone. The, the internet on, uh, Spring Street died.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, but I've, I've put it in on my telephone.
Yeah, but we're just going to come back. We went to, the board went into recess for about five minutes, starting at around like seven. Um, so, um, they'll come back from recess in about one minute and then we'll, uh, come back.
Yeah. Thank you for the.
No problem.
Good chat.
All good.
I'm, I'm good on this end of this, um. Driving home to get on the, uh, on my home computer, but I'm happy to do it over the telephone. I think we're about done, so.
We need to make a motion to come out of recess or.
Yeah, why would you do that?
I'll make a motion to come out of recess.
It's like. Yes, a second.
Yes.
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 We can be on 86 Spring Street, so. Is there any more public comment?
Um, I do not see any at this time. Appreciate everyone's patience on the matter. Sometimes things happen. Uh, but no, I don't see any, uh, comments directed towards us or any virtual hands raised.
Mr. Morris, this floor.
Yes.
Would you like us to delay the vote? Would you like to continue this? Would you like to, us to close the public hearing? What, I mean, I would give you that option.
Um. I, can I ask one, one question before you do close the public hearing? Um, between our addition and the front building. Uh, there's a little, little four foot connection. Um, you'll, you'll, unfortunately, the plan's up there, but you could see that the, the back addition does not meet up with the front. Addition, the first floor continues on, but the top doesn't. If we were to eliminate that four foot section, so there were two buildings. Would that change the application of the, the bylaw in your opinion?
Where would the unit be in the front building or the back building?
The addition, the addition would be solely to the back building. And the application would be solely for the back building.
Would be, would be, would the unit, would the residential unit be in the front building or the back building?
It would remain in the front building where it was. The front building would remain completely unchanged.
So in my opinion, it would be no, because that's the street fronting building.
Okay, um, I, as I said, I, I, I don't want to, I appreciate the board's time and I. I have heard the board's opinion. Um, so I, I'm satisfied with those in the public hearing and, uh. You know, if.
Do you want us, do you?
If the board decides to go that way, then, then we.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, there is one, there's one additional option. The applicant can withdraw if he chooses.
So, so Mr. Morris, my point is that there are four members here this evening, not five. Would you, would you, would you like the option to have five here to vote? Are you comfortable with four?
I'm comfortable with four.
If you want to withdraw the application, to continue before we move forward or no?
Uh, no, no, I don't. Um, the, the board is welcome to take their vote and issue the decision.
Do we have a, a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
A discussion? Ms. Ross?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And then we, yes. So, uh. You know, board deliberation on the project, does anybody want to make comments or discuss it? Where, where are we at at this point?
I think our, I think our, that's, as Mr. Morris has said, I think our current stance is pretty clear, so I'll just, I'll just make a motion to deny the special permit.
So a motion to a second?
I could second that.
And, and, and just in terms of that. If there's a denial or motion on that.
One discussion now, right, Mr. Brian? We're going to discuss.
Sure, there's been a motion in a second. Um, yeah, I, I, in terms of any discussion or approval or denial, I would, I would ask for the, the board. Provide some feedback. I know we have minutes and there's been discussion, but, um, just a reasoning in terms of any denial or, um, as part of this motion. In respect to the applicant.
My, my reason for moving to deny is the, the first floor apartment, uh, would not conform with the, the mixed use requirement. Uh, in addition to the, the zoning issues that would preclude us from voting yes in the, or approving the project right now as it stands in the first place.
And I just say, you know, I think it's unfortunate that we can't move forward with the project, but, uh. The, uh. I think there's a very large expansion of the residential component of the building. And we're asking for a very small expansion of the commercial footprint of the building. And the whole point, in my opinion, of the mixed use bylaws is to revitalize downtown, create more opportunities for people to go to work and to live. And this. This application does not enhance the first floor commercial aspect of this building at all. Does not expand it. And just simply expands the residential, you know, residential component of it by simply suspending six apartments in the air over it. So. You know, I think that I would be in favor of it if Mr. Morris would, uh. Accept the condition that the, um. First floor apartment become commercial. I think we could work with him on a timeline on that, but, um. I'm willing to do so. I, I agree. Any other discussion?
Nope.
All right.
All right, so we have a motion to deny in a second. Mr. McDonald?
Yeah, uh, well, yes, right, yes for the.
During the roll now, I'm sorry, because we're done with discussion, we had a motion, a second, we had discussion, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes, okay. Thank you very much.
I just. Can I be heard? Hello?
Yep, Mr. Morris, go ahead.
I just, I, while I completely disagree with your decision, I did wanna take the time to thank the board for the time they've put into this, um, this discussion. I know it's gone on several meetings and I, I do thank you for your service to the town. Uh, I always try to be friendly as far as being, uh, not being disagreeable when I disagree. So, thank you again for your time and have a good evening.
I would agree with that, Mr. Morris, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alright, so, uh, we have, um, Mr. Silver, I know, waiting on the line, um, and he has two items before us this evening. Um, is Mr. Silver representing Crimson Way or are we just bringing that up on our own?
No, that's, that's a street acceptance referral from council.
Okay, so we do have a laying out of acceptance of public way, it's a public meeting. We did receive some feedback from Mr. Tanzi, I believe, on this and from Mr. O'Brien. Do you, Mr. O'Brien, wanna just give us a quick update on Mr. Tanzi on Crimson Way?
Sure, I'll let, um.
And I, just for the record, I don't have a conflict with this project, but I will recuse myself because I've, I've had a conflict with the developer in the past.
Sure thing. Um, yeah, just to summarize, uh, it's the laying out and accepting of a, a, a private way. Our public laying out and accepting of a, a private way to become a public way, uh, Crimson Way. Uh, so we have a referral and, um, I'll let, um, Greg kinda provide a brief summary of, uh, this coming to, uh, before the board and kind of his interpretation of his satisfaction with the plan.
Uh, good evening, um. Several inspections were done out at Crimson Way. And all the work, um, was done for the plans. We had them, um, uh, it's some, um, hoods, there were some hoods that weren't done on the catch daisens, but they, um, they put, put the hoods back on, on the, um, catch basins. They cleaned out the catch basins, they cleaned out the proprietary, um, the stormwater treatment unit. Um, some, some trees fell on the drainage basin on the drainage lot. Um, I had them clean, clean those, um, that, that debris out of the basin and they did all that, the swells, um, were in, uh, good condition. Um, all the bounds were in. There was some driveways that, um, we wanted to, um, uh, cut down and make sure that, um, the, the top horse blended in with the Cape Cod berm, they, they did that work, so, um, once they satisfied my list of comments and, uh, the comments that came in from, um, the water department, there's, there were several, um, uh, gate valves that had to be corrected and, um, the water department went out there and, and saw the corrective work that had been done, they reported to me, so, uh, finding that all that work had been completed, the satisfaction of the water department and the engineering department. Um, we, um, issued a, a letter that, uh, said that the street was ready for acceptance.
Alright, greatly appreciate it. So, uh, just, just a healthy reminder of everyone at home and watching in terms of the procedure, where we're at in terms of layout of acceptance of a public way, uh, petitions made to council typically by an applicant. In this, may, the petition is based on the initiative, we need a plan, of course. Council votes for the intention and then the council refers this petition to the planning board, so we received this, uh, petition for a non-binding recommendation. Um, and we received this petition in May, um, so we're just essentially providing a report and, uh, going from there and letting city council know how we feel about, um, the accepting of the private way.
Right, any board discussion on this? Like I said, I don't have a conflict with this subdivision, but I'm not gonna vote, but I'll continue to just run the Zoom meeting here, so if one of you wants to comment or ask questions to the staff or make a motion, I'll entertain that.
Sounds like there's no, no existing issues, recommendation from, uh, our engineers to go ahead with it, so I'll make a motion to approve acceptance of the, uh, public way.
Second thought.
So, by Mr. McDonald, the second by Ms. Ross? Okay, any discussion? Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Rojas?
Yes.
Just look on.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, next on the agenda. We have a bond estimate for South Farm Estates.
You do. Um, so last time, this was before the board, um, the applicant at South Farm.
The one in the packet is not the updated one, correct?
This is the newest, uh, oh, no, I apologize. No, the, um, the one provided to the packet was dated five, uh, twenty twenty-two. Um, and the one emailed and I got that packet before I got the update of the five twenty-seven twenty-two, five twenty-seven.
I, I have the packet up on my screen, so I just wanna go to the.
Sure, I apologize, let me, um, grab that in front of me. I have the packet physically in front of me.
Was that the May twenty-seventh email, Tuesday?
Uh, that is correct. So, just to summarize and I know I had it placed in the pack of the five twenty-one, uh, packet, but, um, South Farmer Estates, um, the board voted in January of this year, um, for a surety number for the road bond of sixty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-two and fifty cents. Um, and with a review from town engineer Greg Tanzi, who can attest to this as well. Um, the applicant has completed a fair amount of work in relative, uh, relatively speaking to telephone cable fire, uh, and other conduit manhole removers, uh, removal, um, which was, has reduced that cost, um, to seventy-five hundred. So that initial number of sixty-two thousand has that total surety required completion number, um, the applicant would now be providing us a check for twenty-nine thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Hey, do you, does the board have any questions for Mr. Tanzi, Mr. O'Brien on this? If not, would somebody like to make a motion to accept the bond estimate of twenty-nine thousand five thirty-five?
Some more.
Mr. Geller?
Second.
And Ms. Ross, a discussion? Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Ms. Rojas?
Yes.
And then we yes.
Thank you.
So next up, we have Green Place Discussion, so Engineering, so, um, Mr. O'Brien, if you wanna lead us off with this?
Sure, uh, we had a request, um, by a Mr. Larry Silva, uh, of Silva Engineering, um, and wanting to discuss Green Place with the planning board. So I will keep it as simple as that, and if the board would like Mr. Silva to speak, um, we're happy to allow him to talk.
Joe, Mr. Silver? Mr. Silver?
Well said. Uh, Larry Silva from Silver Engineering Associates. Uh, this Green Place is a project, uh, down off of South Street and, uh, ties into Lyman Place. And it's a project that goes back, uh, quite a ways. Uh, two thousand and three was the original decision letter, um, that approved the project. Uh, the, the work began on the project and then, um, reached the point at which it, uh, hit a sort of a stalemate where it's, it ran into a couple of things, uh, one of which was a recession that was pretty, pretty long recession. But, um, I pieced together some of the information, uh, that had transpired in the past. Cause the first issue that we wanted to discuss was Lot One. Uh, Lot One, um, is the first lot coming in on the right of the subdivision. It, um, it's opposite where the existing, um, home is on Green Place. Um, and that's a Green Place, by the way, is a historic street that had been there way back in, uh, the early days of Bridgewater and this project was, uh, extending it, uh, further in from where it used to terminate. So Lot One, as you can see on the screen there, is opposite the, uh, the Ben and Nadi, um, home, which is on the opposite side. So, um, there was a point in time in which, um, a request was made to the planning board, um, to, um, basically allow for Lot One to be built upon and not to be included in any kind of, um, uh, requirements for the covenant or the bond. And it was actually a decision made, uh, by, voted by the board to release Lot One. So my first request tonight is just to, is just to reaffirm that with the planning board and to make sure that that, uh, is a clear understanding. So that, uh, we, um, so my client will be able to move forward with the sale of Lot One to a builder who would like to, uh, build a home there. So that's the first item that I wanted to talk about. So do you wanna take them one at a time or do you wanna? I think it's probably.
So, so, so Lot One, when, what year was that released, uh, board drawn to be released?
Yeah, at the meeting of, um, June seventh, two thousand and ten, my notes and it's, um, and it was reaffirmed by notes that, or by minutes from the, um, planning board was that it was voted, uh, to release, uh, Lot One. Let me see if I can, uh, find for you that document. My notes had indicated that, um, that we, we request was to release Lot One and, and post a bond for the remaining lots. SCA was gonna work with the planning board to establish a bond amount that night. And we may be asked to identify some quantities, Hickey and Ronnie, meaning Ronnie, um, the dude, uh, to, uh, provide costs. Alternatively, they may ask Baggis or Zoo. So, Ronnie must have been, um, I'm not sure who Ronnie was at that point. It wasn't Ron Adams. But it said Hickey and Ronnie to provide costs. That might have been Ron Ladue working in the highway department. And it says alternatively, they may ask Baggis or Zoo to do the bond. The vote was yes to release Lot One. And it said, um, so I'm looking for that actual, um, I don't know if you have it right there as a, something to put on the screen, but I have the minutes that were done for that meeting.
Did the board sign a lot released at that point?
Um, I have a vote of the, I have the minute saying that they voted to release it.
Mr. Town staff have any evidence or recording or signatures, so?
Uh, I looked through the registry of deeds and I couldn't find anything specific to that lot release. I, I did find the subdivision that was recorded at the registry. Uh, but I, I can't, I couldn't find anything offhand in terms of information about that particular lot release, um, or, or bond information. I, I know we did reach out to DPW in regards to those numbers and I, I don't know if, uh, Zoo could provide some historical resources um, as well. I know he's been here forever.
Well, but let me just say to you, I have right in my hand the minutes from that meeting. You do not have that?
Not, not in front of me, but in terms of the actual lot release information, that'd be typical of a board. I, I, I understand minutes say that. But I can see if there's anything that we have within our electronic files or that I have offhand, um. But, um, in regards to bond information, I'd, I'd have to direct that question to a zoo.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying bond information. What I'm saying, the first part of it, the Lot One release.
Gotcha.
What was my question, this is? Hey, um. If a lot, if a lot release is not a file, do we have the right to even try to control it, right?
Good.
Good, Mr. Johnson, I'm sorry.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Uh, notwithstanding the, uh, minutes, uh, where typically, um, a matter of fact, uh, the statute requires that there be an actual vote, an action of a, a board and that release gets signed, uh, in lieu of a bond, but let me back up here for a second. Let, whether there, whether the minutes reflect that or not, uh, it is my position and it's well founded that even if the board had at a time voted to do that, uh, which I'm not privy to, and I was around at that time, that would have been a vote that would have been in error. And so let's assume for a moment that the board, uh, did that. Um, it is not, uh, it will not be proper in my judgment for this board to perpetuate an error, even if that, uh, a vote was taken. Uh, because the board ma, the board, as she was constituted, constituted at the time, uh, did not have the requisite, in my mind, information, uh, to properly substantiate the vote. Green Place, for you to have a formal plan endorsed by the planning board, it has to be a public way. And that road is not a public way. Therefore, you, about the subdivision was tying into, tying into South Street in order to create a roadway and subdivision on that subdivision control law. Lot One has a frontage. It is meeting its frontage requirement on Green Place, okay, as a definitive subdivision. Therefore, that would have been an, a vote in error because there was no approval of a preliminary subdivision, uh, roadway with utilities that was approved by this, by the board. So any action by the board at the time to release that lot would have been in error. So then that moves us to the next point, which, uh, I'm sure Mr. Silva will address. And that has to do with the, uh, issue of the bond. Since he has not addressed that, I will not make a, I will, uh, hold my comment, um, uh, for now, but I don't think that this board, uh, should, uh, really be releasing any lot within that subdivision. The application was for an eight lot, whatever the number of lots, including Lot One. If the board would have a, you wouldn't be voting to release a lot. See, this is where the error comes in. If the road served for frontage for that little portion, right? Then Lot One would have not, would not be part of the subdivision and therefore there would not be any need to release it. So by virtue of trying to release a lot by a vote, a, a lot that actually has a frontage, that tells you right there that it is part of the, it is part of the subdivision. And that subdivision unfortunately does not exist. So it would be improper, uh, for this board to be releasing any lot within the subdivision where the subdivision doesn't exist. It is expired for more than eight, eight, nine years. So, uh, you don't really have a subdivision for the purposes of the action of this board.
Um, Mr. Chairman, could I, could I respond for a second?
Mr. Silver?
I, I don't wanna get into a, a long, uh, debate about this and it might require us to, um, have a follow-up to discuss it. Um, but there was an as-built submitted for the roadway, uh, to the board and this action was taken a, a, after that was, uh, submitted to the board. It, the, the roadway was constructed with Mr. Hickey, um, Inspecting everything as it was being constructed at the expense of the applicant. Okay, and the minutes. Which Azu says he does not have those minutes, I can provide him or someone else can provide him to him. And I think that maybe after we've discussed that. A little bit more, maybe, maybe not, but I think that it might change a little bit in terms of. The position as it relates to lot one. But this subdivision, this was completed, the work was done and as-built was submitted. The as-built was accepted and the and the action that was coming out of the meeting was. They re they voted to release lot one and they were asking for a bond to be established by. By the then highway superintendent and I believe Azu to. Put in place for the remaining lots. And that was, I know it's a long time ago. And so I'm not asking that we release the remaining lots and that's a whole nother issue. But this action was taken with the understanding that the road had been built.
And I understand that Larry as well. However, typically, we would have some sort of Form E on file or recorded at the registry. That would be notarized inside by board members and from my recollection of looking through the files and. I would say with your recollection as well, I don't know if that. Particular item exists or it's just lost in the shuffle since two thousand three. But I.
I don't think that changes the vote that the board took at that time.
Well. It's a recorded document at the registry.
Which is what you rely on at that point. Maybe maybe we need a legal. You know, a legal weigh-in by town council. I don't know.
Yeah, you can request that our opinion. But at the end of the day. A good analogy is you have, let's say you have a definitive subdivision. Okay, that the board acted on. And yes, the minutes record, let's say, for example, Crimson Heights. Right, that was approved by this board and it was constructed. Let's assume for a moment. That you approve that subdivision and the minutes document that you approved it. But then there is no instrument recording the action of the board, right? And no plan endorsed. It doesn't matter what the minutes say. The proper vehicles or instruments that memorialize or memorializes the action of the board. Or do not exist. So so in the absence of our prime officer evidence. Documenting an actual act of the board other than a general discussions that are memorializing in minute or minutes. Unfortunately, that does not exist. And I don't I don't recall the board ever signing something like that. So so that's why we're here. And as Larry indicated a little earlier. He said that the applicant or developer. Fell on hard times, so it fell on hard time that they did not even move through. Assuming for a moment that indeed the board voted. It fell on a hard time that the developer did not even pursue building on that house or building on that lot. For over nearly twenty years. So it's it's. It does not exist, unfortunately. And yes, Mister Hickey might have done inspections. You you take, for example, Crimson Height, you just hear an excellent. Our report by the town engineer documenting and providing a reading correspondent. And I don't recall any correspondence that are would have been offered by myself. When you're the engineer for Green Place, I think about Green Place is fraught. Fraught with several deficiencies. That I don't think about this board. Our is in a position or should be in a position to be doing any or releasing of any lots or affirming. A vote that may that may or may not have been taken. At the time. And certainly, our moving forth going down the road. The DPW will not. Based on inspections by the DPW staff, including myself. I will even entertain any conversation of approving any portion of that road. It is in very deplorable condition. The drainage system does not ever function. The drainage basin that was supposedly constructed is totally overgrown by. Trees that have anywhere from four to eight inch caliper. You've got it. You've got a dump truck that has a tree growing through it. Within the roadway, so it 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 just does not exist. So I don't think of this board should be entertaining any discussions about releasing any lot. Or lots on that road until such time that the applicant files a new application. For definite. That is properly vetted, reviewed and were opined on.
So is it staff's opinion that we should get a legal opinion from Attorney Rollins in regards to lot one or? Where do we want to?
Well, our our well, our position is that the subdivision has expired. But we can look up additional information.
Well, so I guess there's lot one a separate issue from the expiration or is it the same issue?
I would say it's it's lot ones within the subdivision. And the subdivision is expired. So it it does become problematic. In terms of if anyone wants to build there. But I I I would say that we probably need a legal opinion on the matter. Just to be on the safe side for all of us involved because ideally. Larry's, Mr. Silva is vouching for the applicant and who wants to do work there and complete the project. And we, of course, want a quality subdivision that's complete and up to. Our standards of subdivision, you know, albeit our subdivision standards have changed since two thousand three. But you know, we may have. More stern requirements in terms of our subdivision requirements now than they were in two thousand three. In regards to stone water as well as DPW standards.
I I would like to point out to you that lot one. Has frontage on Green Place existing roadway at the time. That before the project was even started. Okay, Azu.
Just to that point, Mister Chairman. If lot one existed with the proper frontage. Lot one did not exist by itself. Lot one is part of the overall land that was subdivided. So to say that it it existed and had a frontage will be a mischaracterization.
It had lot one has frontage on what was originally Green Place is what I'm saying. In other words, if they wanted to build one house. On all of the land. They should have been able to just go in and 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 get a permit for a house without doing a subdivision. That's what I'm saying.
Right, it would have been able to do that if at least on the on the premise that it meets the requirement for a retreat lot. Because then the frontage, we will not be counting the frontage on that green place because it's not existing public way.
It was. It's an existing public way. It's an ancient public way. Ben and Nadi's house is on it. The Ben and Nadi house is on that stretch. That section of it has been a right of way in the town of Bridgewater since the eighteen fifties.
Okay, so even if we give you that, then you'll be building, you'll be building on the entire land. That's one lot.
That's a moot point because that's not what was that's not what was applied for. They did not apply for an A and R plan back in two thousand and three.
Thank you.
Just because I know. I did. We did receive the information about the minutes and the minutes. Of July twelfth, twenty ten reflects state covenant release for lot one site. However. I do not have that document. I have not seen said document and said document has not been recorded at the registry of deeds. So just want to make that abundantly clear.
So if that document was made. It was brought forward now. What would be the difference? There's no statute of limitations on the document if the vote took place. Is there? That's the legal part of it. That's what I'm saying.
It wasn't recorded, right?
It's not signed yet, so it can't be recorded.
Right, so if I may, and then it will be fine to have the town council will plan on it. If a based on Mr. Silva's testimony a few minutes ago. Even if they signed that, that was based on a bond to be posted. And since that bond was posted, it's not void. There's no bond posted for that release.
Was it also based on the subdivision approval?
You had a subdivision that. Anyway, we probably be going around in circles.
I think you got to read the documents first and then we got to look to see if there is something signed.
But even if even if we found that document, if the subdivision is deemed to be expired. That lot release would be moved anyway, correct?
Correct, because it's released a subdivision, not as a forming.
No, I'm just listening. I didn't have a comment.
So I I know there's a lot to kind of take in here for the board, but I we just wanted to have. Mister Silva come before the board, present. His case as well as hear the board's opinion on the matter. But it it does seem like it's going to be a continuing issue that we'll be having discussions with the board. With Mister Silva and as well as our town legal counsel. To rectify this issue and kind of give a direction for all parties involved to kind of. Get the ball rolling on this, so. If the board any other questions and Mister Silva had any questions, so. Like I said, we'll we'll keep everyone in the loop on this matter, but we just need to confirm with everyone and. See if there's additional information that exists out there within our files. Because right now we're going based on minutes and you know. Ideally, we prefer recorded documents and see what's in our paper. Our physical file or whatever else is out there on both ends, so we just want to kind of keep everyone in the loop on these.
Any board questions for them, Mister Silver or staff?
Yeah, just a just a follow-up question for Mister Silva. Do you have any response to the the assertion that even if, you know, the documents were found, it would kind of be a moot point? Do you do you disagree with that assessment or?
I I have a different opinion of it, and that's why I think that town council needs to weigh in. I think Azu and I are looking at it from two different points of view. My feeling is though that they the board at that time. They did vote to keep lot one. The release lot one and only puts post a bond for the remaining lots. There's a lot of actions that did not take place after that. At least we haven't seen documents that support it. So it's really a question of. What does, you know, what does stand and what doesn't? I understand that the road has sat there all this time. I'm not even talking about those other lots right now in terms of. What would have to be done in order to bring that back into some sort of compliance? I think it's just this this first lot. I thought this this first lot, in my mind, it's it's a clearer issue than it seems to be in others. Point of view, so I mean, I I think that we we have to work through this, that's all.
So from what Mister Entenere said, even if. The document was recorded and we had it and everything else, lot one doesn't even really exist anymore, is that correct? Is what the town's position is?
I I don't think that that's the case. I mean, once you divide the lots, the lots are divided. It's that the. The subdivision as it is, if it doesn't meet the requirements today. They have, it has to be. You know, reapproved for that for that, you know, to the standards today. But I don't know as though that that would change the lot lines unless unless the lot didn't meet the standards for a lot in Bridgewater today.
But you're the point of the matter to Mr. Driscoll's point, a question or comment. The lot lot one. I I would I would agree that if you were to build a house on the entire the entire piece of property. As an existing land, you have a case to be made. You don't need a subdivision approval. But subdivision was done. Lot one therefore was created as part of the subdivision. Hence, the reason for the supposed rel- lot release. So so the fact that is requested or documented in the minutes that there was a vote to release. Right there, it's a clear prime officer evidence that lot one did not exist. And lot one did not get created as a as a lot. If it had a release on, that means it was released as part of the subdivision. So now the question is. Is that release valid now? Well. There is no there's no documentation, no evidence of that release, at least as of this moment. Number two, the subdivision does not exist. And that minute that was referred to talks about a bond, right? For example, all the subdivisions that this planning board has approved. When they bring a preliminary subdivision, you have a bond, right? And then sometimes this board has said, okay, in lieu of a bond, they're going to keep two lots. Because the two lots have have the same value of as a bond money that would have been kept, right? There's no bond. There's no bond approved on on. Paid to the town or secured. So so right there tells you that it was not. Properly executed. And no bond that exists, so yes. Make everybody feel comfortable, refer it to the town council. That's why you have a town attorney. But I will be I will be very, very shocked if the opinion when it comes back is different. You don't have a valid subdivision. You can't you can't say lot one. Existed. But then it was created as part of the subdivision and infer that it was released. If it were released, it was part of a subdivision. You wouldn't be releasing. There will not be a need to be releasing the forming.
My point was that if it was released. Before before the subdivision expired, it was actually still active at that point. So it was released while it was still a subdivision.
I'm telling you right now, and you're not going to find any document that says executed. Because there is no evidence anywhere that a bond was posted. And so if you did not post any bond and there's no document secure and recorded. Even if it wasn't recorded, that was signed by the chairman of the board or the majority of the board at the time. That law release does not exist. About the the discussions in the memorializing the minutes, notwithstanding.
Either way, we're going to have to have more of a discussion on this matter, Mister Chair. But we just wanted to keep the board on the loop on this matter. And keep this rolling because, you know.
I just want to make sure Mister Ross and Mister Geller have a chance to speak and ask questions. McDonald, you all set?
Can I can I just. Indicate that if you do not have any of these documents that I have. Some of which came from your office. I'd be more than glad to share them however you want at that point.
Are you speaking in regards to the minutes or like any covenants?
Anything that I have, the minutes to certify plans, the any of the documents that I have. But I'm just saying that. Just just to be clear. The 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 actual motion that is documented in the minute says. After a bit more discussion, a motion was made by Mister Cludia. Seconded seconded by Mister Gormley to release lot one from the covenant. And the remaining lots are subject to a road bond. The vote was three in favor, one against, so they were excluding it from the road bond. So just keep that in.
I guess the question is, is if the road expired. Then that may not even exist anymore, lot one, correct?
That will be correct. That will be correct because lot one exists. Lot one does not exist.
Ross, Mister Geller, any questions?
I, I, Don, I, I think you're, I think you are at the point where you're telling the board what's going on. And I think you still need to go back and go talk to the attorneys and find out about the next step.
I agree.
I agree too. I feel, just listening, it's. If these documents aren't found anywhere, then it's clear that someone dropped the ball and completing the process. So. I wouldn't, I wouldn't vote in releasing anything if these documents aren't in place.
Okay, Mr. McDonald, I know we cut you off. Do you have anything else to say?
Nope, nope, that was fair.
Mr. Silva?
No, I, I thank you for your time tonight. I know it's been a long night. We don't want to talk about Springfield anymore and I think that we all should go.
Yeah, and just to follow up with the board, once we, once we find a resolution on this matter, we'll bring this item back before the board.
Thank you very much.
Any board committee liaisons on the lots?
Uh, I didn't place any minutes on the agenda. We do have some outstanding minutes. Uh, but I wanted to kind of keep it off the agenda for now. And we'll probably bring them back up for the, the fifteenth. As it seems at this moment in time, we have a lighter agenda.
Oh, the minutes, the minutes that were in the. Or south final states.
That's correct, yes. Um, but it just in regards to. Planning board matters. Uh, we are going to be remote as of June and July, just to let the board know. So we have continuing remote meetings. This month and next. And additionally too, I forwarded over the board, we had the discussion a couple of meetings ago. About the updated maps regarding the master plan. If the board had any comments or questions or were satisfied by those updated maps. I'm happy to take some comments on that too, so we can proceed with the final document. And get you guys a nice, pretty PDF of each of them. So if anyone has any comments or if they're, everyone's just satisfied and thrilled by the, the new plans and I can. Quickly bring that in front of the board.
I have, I know you said something, I apologize. Mr. Next week to look at.
We can look at it now. I don't want to take anyone's time up, but. Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to just to, you know, because I don't want to delay another week. You know, the board voted on the matter and I just want to. Come back before this, so.
So we should just be, sorry, but we should just be checking the things that the board had requested changes to.
Strictly the, is strictly the two maps. I want to have the discussion and I don't want to reopen it. Uh, so map number one, let me just see if I can zoom out of this. So we, previously, we had that map that had a lot of gray on it on open space land. So. Uh, there's a new map that is called map two one A, which is town of Bridgewater land used by land cover. Showing the twenty sixteen land cover use based on information from the NOAA land cover data. So if more representative of all the greenery that is in the town. That is correct, especially with map two one B as well. This is the map that was more controversial. That kind of showed areas of the Hockamuck Swamp as institutional. So this map is more based on the assessors code. That's more reflective of the institutional and the open space and recreation based on our records. So we actually got a new map out of it as well as this updated map. As mentioned.
Any board comments for Mr. Brian?
Sorry.
Personally.
Any other comments on these maps? I think you did what we asked you to do.
Yeah, so should be all set. Just letting you guys know that those are the updates made to the master plan. Based on those comments, but we're voted a couple of meetings ago, so all good. But we just wanted to show how quickly we were able to turn that around.
Mr. Chairman, I was just about to turn off my computer when I started put up that map. And the question I had is, is if you, could you put that on again? I just wanted to ask you a question. That you show all this institutional. All the way down on the south side.
Can you bring that back up?
Sure, let me just pull that up right now.
No, I'm talking. Alright, so what, where are you showing? You're not showing open space down near the river? There's a lot of that you have is institutional.
And this is, and just to.
Was the open space to the backside of it, the green?
Correct.
And just, just to clarify as well, this is based on assessors codes as well, Larry.
Okay.
Um, so i- it does come out as a use code of a nine whatever. So it does. Correspond to some institutional, whether it be owned by Massachusetts, you know, wetlands and et cetera, et cetera.
I got you. Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify that too, that was, that was a discussion at the master plan meeting that. Uh, about the use codes and kind of the problematic notions that our use codes create.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
Oh, no problem. No, thank you.
Any board comments or questions? Any more comment from the staff?
All good.
Mr. Entenaro, it's nice to be back. For one night, anyway.
Well, you know, it's good to be back for, at least for one, one project. I just don't want to tell the bridge what I do be responsible for. Our roots that are not able to open its standards right now. We, we've got enough of those already. And we're trying, we're trying to, we're trying to bring the town to the point where it's, it's a desirable community. With our, our roadways.
Any, anytime you guys want Azu to come talk about zombie subdivisions, I'm happy to have him here.
I think Greg would be happy to share the duties as well.
We'll bring, we'll bring everyone. Anyone's welcome.
Mr. Entenaro, before you took your wallpaper down, what, what was that?
Massachusetts Land Surveyors, something, something.
Isn't it the Society of Engineers or something, isn't it?
That's the Massachusetts Association of Land Surveyors and Civil Engineers. It's called Masi.
Yeah, I was curious, I looked it up.
What does the WSP stand for?
Good smart people.
Wow, Pat, that's, that's a good, quick one.
I would never say that about you. Could have said stupid, but I said smart. We have a motion to adjourn before we get in trouble. My Mr. McDonald, do a second. Hi, Mr. Geller. Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
And I should ask you, Mr. Brian, you were done before we adjourned, correct?
Oh, yeah, I've been done.
And I just before, but I just interrupt before, can everybody just send Shane all of your. If you're gonna be away taking vacations this summer during planning board meeting. So that if we're trying to like cancel meetings, we know which are the best ones to cancel. So I know that Steve and Pat already gave us some dates. But if you could just put those in an email so that we have that information.
Yeah, I'll resend the, the meeting dates for the rest of the year and just kind of let me know your availability. I'll send them to Ray as well.
We're, I know we're trying to go away probably sometime in August, but we're kind of planning it by year with the baby, so. That's the best I can give you right now.
Like I said, you can tell me, you can tell me offline. I don't need, spare me the details. Just, I'll, I'll, we'll, we'll go.
As you know, Michael, that's fine too. Whenever you know, it's fine.
Yeah, I figured, yeah. Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure.
Alright, you just need to vote Pat and then you can adjourn.
Yes.
Yes.
Didn't we already vote?
Yes, you did.
Everybody but Pat voted, so.
Good night.
Night, everyone.